All right, I'm going to be needing to order. Get the guests sign in, thank you very much. Katie, you have the list?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll do a quick, we'll call this what we think. Maybe put it up here, Joe.
Teresa, here, Mary Trace Nancy, here. Cindy Kelly, here.
Katie and John.
Katie, one third here.
John over. Okay, uh, has everybody read the minutes? If so, are there any corrections or can I get a motion to approve?
I will make them because you approve and Melanie's online if she got it. You find any mistakes, Mel?
Melanie, is there?
She is.
Try to follow in, okay. I'm making the motion.
Can I give a second?
My second.
All paper?
Aye.
Any phones? Okay. That's done. Um, normally we have public comment. Are you guys here for any of the business items? Meaning the, um, demo permit review and ADG design review of three ring three ten?
The woman adoption.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was being listening and I didn't.
Yes, we got it.
Then who adopted?
Uh, Suzie, um.
Joe, Joe seconded.
Joe seconded, we all agree.
The what? The minutes, sorry. Did you make my connection wrong?
I did. Is there, um, now's time for public comment, so let me go ready to move. Anybody wants to say anything, have that. We'll start from here.
I'm here for the three LA three ten.
Okay. Huh?
Been around here about as long as the historicals.
Not quite as long.
Uh, the thing is, is I've helped out with the front things and it's only fair that I should give you guys a little more than just what I can do. So if there's something else I can help with, then that's what I'm here for.
I already told you.
Volunteering.
He helped, he does have his own train twenty years ago. Oh, that's Tim's thing, yeah.
I'm Maggie Hyde. I work with the Bureau of History Chamber of Commerce, but I also have the opportunity to help bring home a piece of history to the Valley. So at the beginning of the year, I had a gentleman call from Houston with an antique soda fountain ice cream bar that was built for Corbett's confectionery out of Leadville at the turn of the century. So it's a beautiful piece, it's been fully restored. The gentleman's grandfather bought it at the thrift store in University of St. in this late sixties or the seventies. I don't remember the name of the thrift store you could recall.
It was probably one of his newbies, but before that it was.
Something else, I think that's right. And so they bought it here with the intention of using it as a real stop. At that same moment, they were developing, thinking about developing that back in the late sixties or seventies. That didn't pan out, so they ended up having it at their Houston home. And it passed from grandfather to father to son. I got to speak with the son and his own history and he donated it back to the Valley. So we have this twelve foot amazing, beautiful soda fountain, antique soda fountain ice cream bar that is being stored and lovely gentleman's house volunteer to be on the list. And, and it's for now, never thought that that would happen. The gentleman that donated it back to the Valley did. So I'm tasked with finding the other half of shipping, which was then in kind by a woman that grew up in the Valley. So she appreciated the history and wanted to help bring it home.
And it's marble, that's why it's marble.
And it's silver instead of brass, it was made for Leadville. So it's genuinely a very unique piece. I wish I had printed out some flyers I ran out of privacy, unfortunately. And so I am tasked with also not only paying for the shipping now, but getting it here and then finding its permanent home. I've spoken with Lisa and Ray at the museum. They all agree that having it in a business as a usable piece of history is ideal. If we need. My thought process is to create a committee that puts out a business use application for Main Street businesses in University of St. and Leadville. And I only exclude Slidet because they already have a soda fountain there. And I'm open to any and all suggestions, just ideas so far. And how does a usable piece of history? In that, I would ask that the business have a menu item that gives back to Historical Society, that they do free book events for our community at least twice a year and that they're open nine to ten months out of the year. So it is genuinely a piece of our history that everybody gets to enjoy, not just our summer in class. So I'm here to ask for help and to help spread the word. And I'm going to keep trudging along the best I can on my own. And but I would really love if there was a champion that stood up and said, I got time and energy to organize. That is really what I'm looking the most help with, but I will take any kind of help in any regard. And so that's my, my public pleas to just kind of help us get this piece of history functional. And I did talk to the museum, if we're not able to find a business, they will make room for it.
But not on the second floor.
But not on the second floor. Gee, that's too big, that's too big.
Right.
And, and so that's, you know, always a mantra, but helpful would it be to see this back in use? So.
How much money can you be?
So right now, I'm in debt in kind to the shipper, three thousand dollars. And there are a few other items I'd love to have money for, things like plaques for when that's in style. So he said, and I'd love to offer payment for a storage for the kindness of that. But right now, the hard number is about three thousand to begin the shipper payment. They have official invoice, so I can have an actual number, but. So that's, that's where I'm at the moment.
Get a good picture and do some ads and posters and.
That's the marketing. The other concern too is that I know that Historical Society and Museum is doing a big push, so I also.
Yeah, we're trying, we're waiting for that, right?
Right? So I'm hoping maybe for another conversation about how we can combine all of the others. Because at the end of the day, everything for the soda fountain ice cream bar, aside from shipping, tangibles, will all go to the Historical Society Museum Preservation Committee, all of them. So, yeah. Any kind of financial ideas would be great.
The first thing I do is try to get with the paper, do an interview.
Okay, yeah, get Hannah.
Get Hannah, get her a good photograph of it.
Okay.
Get a historical narrative.
Got it.
Um, because she will get you a good article in the paper, which will get you some legs.
Awesome.
Hopefully it'll get down into the Slidet paper.
Because I can definitely work with Art Father Wessels.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, right now, we are. This is the month we're working pretty hard on doing a bunch of stuff. We have a calendar going out, trying to raise money for the courthouse. Uh, we have a coloring contest, we have Thursdays coffee with the Corporate Preservation Commission. But we, you know, me personally, I got a pretty full plate.
I'm charging plates.
Well, you're charging.
And that was the concern too, is to not step on the chairs of average that are.
You're not even stepping behind me, so we would pull up the vehicle to help you. So it sounds like a great opportunity, especially, I'm trying to think. What are some businesses on East Main that are?
Take them.
Or.
It's, it's a great, it's one of these tanks isn't.
It's twelve feet high, eight, eight feet eleven or eight, eleven feet high, eight inches, yeah. And it's about eight and a half feet wide. And it weighs.
A lot.
And that's just the soda fountain portion. The ice cream bar is a separate attached piece that has the stools and the volume functions. Yeah, it's really neat. It's really neat.
Just fine.
I should have come more prepared with pictures today.
I did. Develop her once.
That's what I was hoping for, yeah.
Well, there's Sarah, which I'm thinking about there. Sharon Sarah too.
I think that's.
What are they?
They're, um, you're trying to get the.
Oh, yeah. The old oxygen hub behind them.
Oh, that would be great. And. I do want to be in it. Yeah, yeah. Another person just to be on the list is Lucas Smith. Lucas and Sarah definitely on the list, yeah.
No, they have a soda fountain Slidet, but at least maybe no, I don't mind souls.
No, yeah.
If someone wants it, they would be someone who could talk to him about operating.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe ice cream stores in town would be interested in at least helping you with the, maybe the fundraising. So that's one of my good ideas is, and I just have to, I tend to execute it, is a soda fountain, or excuse me, an ice cream social coupon book. So working with our ice cream stores in town and having them offer, you know, free coupon, buy one get one, whatever it may be, and then selling that at town events. So I have, I talked to Paul at town and there's no restriction on doing that, so everything's cleared. Again, it's the marketing, getting the time to put together a marketing to do that, so. And I did talk to Natalie at Now Box, just she said she's willing to help us print and get that covered. So that's another tangible that I would like to address, but I do think I could work with in points. And if, as long as I can get it made. And then I've reached out to our ice cream stores and most of them have been really receptive to that. So that's another one that I want to start and ideally sell those at the June third community big thing for the stage grand opening.
Is there any, um, openly spaces and, uh, was it? What's the place across from the courthouse?
Yeah, that is nice.
An ice cream place.
Yeah. Probably doesn't have a top place, they don't have. A three ton floor.
Open this one.
Yeah. And other than that, I think the rest of them are either leased or potentially leased.
Or small, or too small, yeah.
I'd love to.
Yeah, that's it. So in person, right now, it's in a million pieces. I was hoping to be able to put it together and do some kind of like event, but that's just not realistic. It's gonna have to be together in its final, or at least it's home for ten plus years. But that being said, I have very, um, not great pictures. Is there a way if I send it to somebody to get it on screen? Otherwise, I can pass my work.
Maybe we can supply it.
Yeah. That, I can email it to whoever is interested. And I can email pictures out with the narrative that came from the original owners as well. And it's an amazing piece.
Email it. Do you know, have anybody's email in this room?
Yes. Yeah, I've got Chase in, yes.
Send it to Chase and he'll get it.
Okay, thanks Chase.
And also, if you, if anyone ever wants to come see it, you know, talk to me, or Maggie.
Okay.
I can set up a time to meet someone, but.
You got it at your place?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's the wonderful, amazing person that is the reason it's here. Without Chase, I would have had nowhere to put it. It was a Nancy, you caught me in the fury of where, oh my gosh, it's coming. Because it happened so quickly, so thank you Chase, you're incredible. Thank you all for letting me share that, I appreciate you.
Okay. Um, we have one phone calling online, assuming they're familiar with Melanie, but. Turning to maybe, okay. Hey Mel? There we go. Hello Mel?
Melanie is here, I'm on the road, so unless it's urgent, I'm not gonna talk to you.
Okay.
Will do.
You're just in time, we're about to go to business items.
Okay, what was that before?
I'm sorry?
What was the conversation before? I never could figure that out.
It, it was about a wonderful marble soda fountain that someone got from Leadville and it's been given to people here and they're trying to find a home for it. It's twelve feet tall and eight feet wide and it's huge. So if you have room in St. Elmo, let us know. But I think it's too heavy for the floor.
It's made out of silver.
And marble.
And marble. Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll catch up with you all, because I heard something about that in January, so I would like to follow up, but, um, we'll get on with the business meeting.
Okay. Um, we're gonna talk about today, we're gonna talk about three oh eight and three ten East Main. We're gonna touch on coffee with commissioners and coloring contests. Airport history documents, reading and updates from related organizations. Are there any changes or additions?
No, I'm forgetting.
Yeah, I got a, oh, forgot it, and calendars.
I thought you mentioned.
Yes, we're gonna bring the permit logs. Picture.
It's one of the, you done a, and a color contest and.
Yeah, calendar and.
And, and, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the business items and agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second? All person's favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's go to the first business item. We're gonna talk about three oh eight and three ten East Main Partial Demo Permit and Architectural Design Guideline Review. So we broke it into two parts. Gonna talk about the demo permit. Um, under nineteen dash four, dash fourteen, first, it's submitted to the town. We're not gonna get this right, too. Um, they determine if it's eligible for historic designation. Then they ask, if it is, they ask a second question is, is there an impact to the character defining features by the demolition? And if that's true, they submit it to us under nineteen dash eighteen and there's a mandatory review and we go through it. And by rights. So we're gonna do the demo piece and who's gonna talk about the checklist that Joseph or Chase?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to just go briefly through it. I was, I'm not, I'm not the expert, but you saw what I.
Yeah.
Um, it starts with, I mean, eligible for designation. Um, and since the, the proposed partial demo and the side, based on a lot of facade innovations, um, it felt like it does have a potential impact on some significant features. And if we're, we're used, we feel that was appropriate.
Does anybody have any comments on the checklist? All, but to be qualified for historic designation, all it, it just has to meet one criteria out of, what is it, about nineteen? Sixteen? It's clearly, can be locally landmarked, so, and it's a store. Is there any question or debate on that?
Be a great landmark.
Okay. Um. So does anybody have any problems with the, can you go to the, the drawings?
Wait, do we have anyone here? We have, we're.
Yeah.
Yeah. Present on the press?
Yeah, um, hi everyone, my name's Mike Mayer, I'm one of the six owners of the building. Um, it's, it's owned by my wife and my, uh, mother, father-in-law and brother and sister-in-law.
Oh, it's my family.
It is, yeah. Yeah. We're going to use water for that. We, we bought it, I think, in April last year. And, um, our, you know, my, my mother and father-in-law who always wanted to own a bar or something, that's just been their life home dream. Um, and so we just wanted to be a part of it too. Um, we're relatively new to the area, we've been here about two years, but, um, I work for South Main currently. And so the design you see now is submitted to us by Brian Moore from Moore Studios, who's done a lot of the, the buildings down there. Um, and his style is in line with the frontier inventory, kind of which I think aligns well with historical standards that we're going for. Um, and so our, our goal with the renovation was just to try to bring it back to what I think what it was originally. Um, at some point in time, I think the storefronts were, were artificially lowered to what they are now. And, uh, I think back when it was originally built, the storefront, which the photos kind of show was, was almost aligned with first land color back in the store. Um, and so that, that, uh, yeah, it's a last page. Oh, there you go. Yeah.
I, I found a new one I sent out. I don't know if you guys got it.
Yes. Yeah, sure. That existing rough opening is still there today, you know, it's crawling up in the attic and the brick actually didn't start until that lower cornice, so all that below is just framed in at some point in time. And so we just want to bring more light into the space and, and bring it back to, to a look more similar to that. Um, and so the renovation is, I think, pretty simplistic and it's hopefully gonna look, you know, not too far from what it did back when it was originally built, I think. Um, you know, there's some, some differing details and things like that, but, um, we're really just going for the high facade. Um, and in kind of the traditional storefront look. Um, we'll see how budget goes. We, we'd like to avoid aluminum, but we really like to go kind of a more traditional look. And.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, it definitely needs a coat of stucco. I think the, the coat on there now is just not really within time, so I think it would be more of a smooth textured look. Um, and then of course we'd extend that, second cornice is missing, you know, I think we'd extend that all the way across. Just bring more units, help me do it.
The court, on the demo drawings, it notes that it says demo that existing cornice, is that your intent? Are you gonna refurbish it or do you?
Yeah, I can't, I mean, budget, it's just dependent on budget. I'm, I'm trying to determine that left hand cornice has, um, I don't know, but the, the prominent feature in the center um, may be tough to match in the line if we buy a separate piece and, and putting two prominent features in the middle might not look right. So I was thinking just removing it and doing a whole new one. Um, but budget may dictate that we just refurbish it, which I think will look great as well. So I, I think that's a little bit to be determined for now. Um, yeah, I think that's the gist of it. Uh, this, the storefront doors are, are shifting on the left-hand side just because it would be more, more conducive to a bar use, you know, congesting everyone in, into the left or right-hand side of that, that space. And then obviously some architectural lighting added down. The cross hatching at the top is, is, could be a pattern that we implement or could just be placed with future signage. We're not quite sure.
Is there hatchel space upstairs? It's just like an attic or something?
Yeah, it's just enormous. You could, you can, I can stand full height in the attic up there.
Six feet, huh?
Yeah, it's not usable at all. It's just, you know, cross members everywhere and it tapers back to probably heights.
So are you gonna take that off? Is that? I've, I think I'm not quite understanding.
Oh. The building height will remain exactly the same. We're not, we're not gonna do it. We're just gonna bring the storefront higher. Uh, just below the, you know, the trestles, yeah.
Yeah, so basically you've got to restore the similar storefront that was there historically with the trans, the large trans windows. You're trying to emulate the divided lights that were there. Looks like the only thing you might notice different in the storefronts is you're gonna have four floors and you're not gonna inset them. Is that correct?
Yeah, probably not. Um, we talked about the inset and I think that'd be, I think it'd be a really cool feature. You could tuck in seating and it would be kind of a nice activated sidewalk. Um, we're just, you know, budget is just such a tight thing for us and so any kind of thing we can, we can do right now saves. So that, that may be on the chopping block.
What's your timeline?
Um, we are, so Push Pull and Bike Shop are ending their lease in, um, October. So we get the space in October from them. And, and during that time, we'd like to make, um, some of the renovations. I don't know if we can commit to all of them at this time, but that would be probably our, our timing, uh, October, November, December-ish.
Have you guys explored any of, um, tax credits that are available for restoring properties just like this?
Oh, no, we haven't.
Well, you can do the red.
Yeah.
Where you say that you, you know, you want to restore, and you are largely presenting a project that restores the building. It's original or one of its more significant, well, periods, um, could qualify it for a tax credit equal to thirty-five percent of what you spend on that. And that, it's, it's actually reasonably, um, it's not horribly difficult. I'm not gonna, but we're still the process, but it's real money available through History Colorado, which is the state's, our preservation agency. Um, and that's something a number of us have experience with, um, um, building things like this. But when I hear you talk about, you know, the cornice work for the recessed um, entrance, you know, those are types of things they would want to see happen, but also would qualify the project for those credits.
Okay.
The credits are, it's a little off topic, but, um, they're, they're calculated based on the total cost of the project, not just restoration of exterior features.
All right.
So it, it seems like if, if you, if you all would like, I, I, I'm in the middle of that process right now in a different project and would be happy to chat.
Sure.
You know, about you. I'm speaking in a sense of like, you know, what, how might it impact you, but your timeline sounds ideal for it.
Yeah, because you've got an extra.
You have the paperwork.
Okay. Funds, that was the paperwork to give a lot of money. I know, it's worth it, I think, yeah. It's worth it, you make several thousand dollars an hour. Yeah.
So, um, so that's.
Okay.
Interesting.
And if you don't know that much in taxes, you can sell it to somebody who needs it. Just like ninety cents on the dollar. Okay.
But then also this, uh, the big billboard type sign is gonna go away also.
Yes, um.
Good.
Right, that was the first thing we wanted to take down. I don't, I didn't know if there was any significance to the town, but it doesn't seem like anyone's attached to it.
No.
We were gonna take that down, yeah.
So my question is at the top up there, are you gonna leave all of that?
Yeah.
If you could work up on that. I just would not tell on the drawing if that was something.
Oh, yeah, that's intended to kind of be existing, yes.
Right.
And then ta, tell us about the demo and the back sign.
Oh, yes, um, so the rear wall, there's been a lot of water infiltration over the years on the, yeah, you can see on the left-hand side of that page. Um, there's just, you know, settlement issues and, and water intrusion. And so we've already done some drainage back there, we've done some dry wells to kind of mitigate it and for the time being, so it doesn't make it worse. But, uh, we had a structural engineer look at it and it's not a, a safety hazard, but it's just, you know, functionally the door won't close and it's just.
They got a demo, is it built it?
I think it's probably a ground that we built. Yeah, I don't know if we can retrofit it and save it, but, um, that's what that scope is there.
Well, from, from a demo perspective, does anybody have any issue with what they're proposing?
Oh, one of the best ones I've heard.
Awesome.
I'm excited to see more of your tales.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Those will be coming.
And I think it'd be great if you talked to them about the tax credits and could maybe do that inset. I think that would be really a nice feature to do that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think they'll pay for a thirty year project.
Oh, yeah, that's, I mean, that could, that could make or break whether we phase this or do it all at once, so that.
You have some, you know, BP Heritage has experience with it. Katie's working on a similar project. And you know that it, it requires work. And submittals and things like that, but it's real money. And, uh, it, it's exactly yours for a project like yours.
Thousands of dollars an hour. Yeah, I guess I'm gonna do that. BP Heritage is on like our fifty-six one. And Katie's on one really big one. Yeah, I think, yeah. I mean, I know that, I'm definitely gonna see that.
Okay, so nobody, do I hear nobody has any issues with the demolition of this piece as outlined on the drawings?
Just a question, what is the tune of it? Oh, that was the site plan from the original owner, so it might have been a bike shop. Oh, okay, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah.
They could whiten all that out, yeah.
Um, I have a question, are you gonna keep it as a bike shop or just as a party customer?
Uh, just as a bar, yeah.
With a soda fountain, yeah.
I know.
It's a great opportunity.
This might be inappropriate.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, your fingers to your chops.
I know. So you're gonna make it all. Your business now? It's still to be determined. We may subdivide, but we're really excited about, I mean, the space is just so gorgeous and subdividing those arches in the middle is just kind of seems, I mean, as much as it's an economical decision, it just seems like the wrong thing to do to fill those in, so. Or we might try to make it work, we're not sure yet. We're still, we make slow decisions as a family, so we're we're probably just gonna take this space over in October and just figure out all the things.
I just started, just wanted to get this guy really.
There's.
So that's the rest is subdivers.
And the story, we just worry, maybe, maybe get that.
The person you may want to talk about on that interior protection is, uh, Court or Larry. They went through the same stuff.
Okay.
So you may be able to shed some light on that.
Yes, I was the number.
Yeah, I've been talking quite a bit. Nine is the superintendent over there, so if you have a lot of help.
Okay. Well, if nobody has any issues on the demo, we'll, we'll take care of the demo and then we'll go to the, the starting time of the piece. Can I get a motion to, what do we motion that approved?
Yeah, approved, yeah.
The language is a bit weird. If you need us to have a motion, maybe all of the demo, okay? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, demo's done. Um, let's go to Architectural Design Guideline Reviews. Did everybody get chance on both of the checklist? It's narrowly, but why don't we go through the checklist? It's always good. And see what issues? Anybody had on the list? Rather than going through every single item, put the items on the list and it would be sections three of these. Chapter four. And on that entire list, it's expensive. Who had issues with it and what are they specifically?
I wonder if you know the original colors. We find that if you give your way into the demo, you find an original layer. Would be nice if you could use that.
Just. Like it now. As the state does it when they're repainting some.
Yeah.
Not really clear, like from the photo, different photos, we generally, we would wanna try to pick a period of significance. So we're trying to make it look. And I, but we, I mean, you know, we're trying to make it look as it did originally and what, I don't know, was it eighteen eighty? Two or something, I don't, I don't, I I've forgotten the date, but eighteen eighties or, you know, one of the mid-century period. And I think particularly in that period, that'll, that'll help to drive. All the timelines apply.
Right.
Um, you know, you can remove a feature that's was added later if it isn't consistent with the period that you're trying to match.
Yeah, well, we didn't quite, we weren't really saying it was specific timeline, time period or type of architecture related. We were, we wanted to kind of at least align with the original construction, original architecture in some ways. But trying to bring just the unique style of of Mark Studios into it was a bit of his goal too. So um, I don't, I don't know if that necessarily applies to what our goal is. Um, so uh, I don't, I don't have a great answer there. We don't have a timeframe per se that we should be for.
Although the sketch that you showed us has a lot of similarities to that Goin pharmacy photograph with the windows.
Yeah, yeah. The photo?
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah. Yeah, I know for forty, you're just timeless too and classy. I mean, it's, it's hard to do something much different than that and and still look pleasing. So I I don't know if that wasn't, that wasn't extremely intentional to that. It was just, it was just kind of that, I think, one of the basics to define those storefronts, so.
Yeah, the challenge in my mind, I I I just went back and looked, your, your buildings were built pre eighteen ninety. I'm not sure exactly when, but there are, there are things called sandboard mats. You can go online and look at it. You looked at it?
Oh, we're not here.
Yeah, and you go back and get a snapshot of when the buildings.
Was there and if it was there and.
Yeah.
I think eighteen ninety-six it shows up.
Yeah. But anyway. There aren't any good photographs. That's the challenge. These are whatever it is, the fifties or whatever.
I got one from the thirties.
You do? Yeah.
That was about thirty-five, nineteen thirty-five I found.
But you know, generally the the older ones look similar to what was there.
Was there, yeah.
You know, that you have the transoms, you have the inset windows, yeah, like this.
Some of the guidelines and the Secretary of Interior standards, they say like whenever possible, if you're making changes or you're trying, doing any work, you should try the best that you can to tie those back to documented evidence of what. What the building historically looked like. So you, not just thinking about what the the style had been in that period. If you can't find that kind of primary evidence, then then you have to go to the, well, you know, what do people remember? Or what do, what does, what was the style? What would have been the.
Yeah.
And just would encourage you to, to when you're kind of making those decisions to pull up those photos and say, oh, well, what they did then and what we're going for was X. And my whole family decision, maybe.
Yeah, you can't tell me like that ideas I steer us away from. Not a family of architects or designers.
Just let the previous architect decide for you then.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're sold here, so I think I've got the reins.
Yeah, and so you know, we're gonna have a discussion, make recommendations, but it's not binding. Okay, so you're already going through the hard part. Let's see if we're able to demo. Everything else here is just, it writes.
Yeah, yeah, and no, I appreciate it all. I I like the sentiment of the committee and everything you're trying to do, so, yeah.
So this picture was, if it ran about, Susie, probably about nineteen sixty-four. Yeah, that one, this appliances.
That's the exterior material over the original brick.
Correct, and this one, as you can tell, I think this is, I don't think it's nineteen twenty, but those cars.
I'm straight up.
Could be a little later and they're having a framing about the old clock set, you don't know.
Generally speaking, you know, the sketch that you have emulates what's on that picture right there. You've got the high transom windows. You know, you have the kick plates, pairs of doors, uh, continuation of both cornices. The only significant difference in the elevation is the plaster curd over the brickwork. And that would be challenging to remember.
Yeah.
You know, unless it's just falling off.
Right.
You risk damaging the rig and running with no return.
Yeah.
And the good thing is it looks like that the stucco was put on at least fifty years ago and as per our eighteen uh, design guidelines. We're looking at that fifty year horizon, so um. And that may have some effect on when you, what you decide for a period of significance too. So for retaining the stucco, maybe you stick with the photos that show the stucco at more interesting places as well.
This period of significance we're talking about is important if you go for tax credits.
Yeah.
Because you have to tell them, okay, I'm going for this period of significance. And then kind of, kind of use that as a guidance for your design. Uh, to emulate that to the extent possible.
Okay.
And but, you know, it looks like to me you're, you're pretty much there. You have the upper cornice, you're gonna replace the missing cornice. Um, transoms, kick plates. I think the only, I think the only pushback that I see on the whole thing is the inset doors.
I agree.
Yeah. So they can significantly, but if you could get some tax credits, it would solve your funding problem.
Yeah, that could change the vote there.
The other thing to consider is if, this is a big if. If you wind up going with aluminum storefront, you could recycle the doors. Those doors are probably worth what, three grand each?
Oh, they're pretty beat up.
Oh, they're beat up?
Yeah, everything's just in a little bit of disrepair.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, they are, I think they are wood. I just, they're just not.
They're wood.
Um, I'm trying to remember. Some, no, the windows are wood, the doors are, doors are metal, doors are.
And the old doors are up in the attic.
Yeah, I couldn't, yeah, I didn't see it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Do you have this form? It's called an architectural inventory form. It was done on this building.
Um, I don't know, I might.
Okay, we'll make sure you get a copy of it, but it describes everything that's available in terms of the history of the building and in terms of also like architectural style. It was done by an architectural historian.
Oh, is that in the?
Five years ago.
Is that in the historical documents? I think I.
It's, it's accessible through the town's website, but um, it's not maybe as accessible as London Life. It's all in one four hundred page.
So you have to find yours, that yours is not one of the pages. It's one of the four hundred pages.
I do have it, I don't know if there is with it all, but.
It's just, these were done by, paid for by the state and pension of the town to provide property owners like yourselves. A roadmap for restoration, basically. Here's a period of significant features that you wanna make sure to maintain. Here are the things that were lost over through the changes that weren't appropriate.
Okay.
Can we not get him a separate copy of that?
Yeah.
I have another question. Are you, so you're gonna demo this? Get that, get me up?
Um, that's, I'm not exactly sure. I think if we did a new cornice, it'd match identically. Or we would just leave the existing one and and just add a second one. It's, I'm not sure exactly what.
I was gonna say if you take it off, you'd be able to preserve it. Be significant for somebody to use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's go through the checklist. Any, um. On the first page, chapter, chapters three, are there any, most of it's not applicable?
No.
But. Is there any issues on page four? From anybody?
One chapter three?
Yes.
If you have a good taste of color.
Yeah, we don't have enough information. Materials.
Also, you probably know, because you have anything for solid.
Solid, I mean, town, town in more of a basement.
Yeah, it's not a good spot unless you build it up like that.
Yeah, yeah. And a paint is brought, it's gonna be definitely on color. With stop, it was probably made in paint and colors.
Was there a particular one that you wanted to look at? Uh, one of the one, one in the drawings, I guess, it probably has, you have Susie's from the sixty, but the one in the drawings. I think kind of emulates what the vibe you're going for, especially the one on the right.
Yeah.
It has the original cornice. It shows the inset doors. Uh, the upper windows are divided in line. That's, that's, that's a similar look to the sketch, I think, that it provided.
I am sure I could find a photo from the fifties or sixties of that. Of course, they might have changed the color from, I think, two or three times. Yeah, and I think if they, if your photos are any indication, they'd already covered up the transom of the windows in the fifties. Yeah. Yeah, that's to make it look more, more of that moldy iron style, that shop front that's more of a fifties. Just to make it look of the time, you know.
The challenge is the older ones have, they all have separate corners. Over the transom, so you can't really kind of hide what's really going on. Um, alright, let's keep moving. Uh, second page, chapter three, on the upper, you know, they talk about fencing, parking lots, accessory structures, things like that. Yeah, all that's in a, uh, moving ahead, chapter four, storage structures and sites, any? On that first page, any comments? Yeah, the only comment I had was it has, um, deteriorate fe- uh, features are repaired. It looks like the upper cornice, at the top of the parapet. You tend to restore that or preserve it. Uh, the, the only question mark is the one cornice, the lower cornice on three oh eight. And my, my recommendation for you is to preserve it or restore it rather than ripping it off.
Okay.
And uh, if you put a different, a one on three ten, it could be, it doesn't need to match. It could be simpler in style. And it could kind of signify that that's a separate building. It's, it was really, only built as a separate building is the way they think. Yeah. Let's go to the next page. We're on chapter four of the second page. Any, is there comments from anybody?
We're calling attention to, in general, what goals can repair and repair rather than replace. And we have to replace, try to match that document.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a perfect match. It could be simple or, or you know, whatever period you're trying to get to. You know, from the, from the second page of chapter four, it looks like you're, you're restoring the transoms. You know, you're, you're moving this building back to, from where it is now, you're moving it back in time historically from an image perspective and. I'm good with that. How many other people?
I, what I really appreciate about what you're trying to do is that we've already had some great progress with other buildings on that same strip. You know, we, we have the long table and that kind of thing and what they did with their windows. And so it, it will have some continuity on the street.
Outside together.
Mm-hmm. Not, not that you have to match every, you know, you don't have to match your neighbors, but there is something to be said for that continuity of um, feeling like it's a, it's a late, you know, late eighteen hundreds commercial building.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the, the vibe that this gives me.
Did you see the grave before they removed it?
I did not.
They, they had a similar thing as you had. The, the, the transoms were covered up with T one eleven. It was dark and dingy and. And really you're, you're emulating what they did. And it, it'll resolve in the same type of image they had on the inside, which is bright, open, a lot of sunlight.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll be awesome.
Yeah.
Especially for, you know, dining or kind of facility.
Buildings and they'll look better before you.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments on this page?
Um, I just wanted to mention to you that there's a leadway about using substitute materials if they're acceptable. You know, find something, the same historical materials, so there's some leads.
And also we allow for the use of, for a moment of storefront, so if the woods too pricey or the maintenance isn't concerned.
Right, I know, it's a tough call.
The sound gets over too.
Yeah, I'll do wood and clad wood, gray wood on the entrance.
Yes.
That'd be my preference, so we'll just, we'll see. I really want to win that, win that battle.
Let's see. Alright, let's move ahead. Um, last page, chapter four. Any comments?
It doesn't look like we've found any historic images yet that show what kind of lighting was used originally. So, on the outside, on the outside, yeah. Probably not much, yeah.
Well, the street lights might have been hit.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
You know, the ADGs on, on the lighting piece, um, we discourage wall washers, but allow lighting under certain conditions. I don't know, what, what do you guys think of the, like, is this considered a wall washer? Or is it?
You look at it and the profile, it looks like a squeegee.
Well, wall washer, there are a couple things. Sometimes they, they use them ground mounted and it just floods the face of the building. And sometimes those, you've seen those lights like in Chicago that go up and down real tight to the building that accentuate the brickwork. That would be a wall washer.
We don't want one.
Yeah, these are.
These are downlighters.
These are downlights. You'd have to coordinate with town's lighting departments, require, require cutoff lighting. Which the sketch you have may or may not.
It may or may not even signage in that area that you might find a amenity. So is there something historically appropriate to?
There's a signage right there. All, all the buildings that have had signage, stick around. And that signage, if you look above it, has lights on it.
That's the thirties picture.
Those blade sides aren't allowed anymore, really.
No. You, you would have to call Doug before you.
What can be used there that could be appropriate for his sixties, his teen sixties. Some easy one.
So why don't we summarize this? Is there any, any other comments you guys have?
I really appreciate the fact that you seem to be headed in the right direction, I guess, is this, I mean, it's not a very technical way of saying it, but. Um, you know, your willingness to look at what it used to be. And like Joe had said, you know, it seems like you, you have a desire to make the building more, you know, but go back to historic forages. Versus something that's going to make new with a big glass box.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something to be probably for decades.
I know, I think there's some charms of Main Street thousands. I know, I think there's some charms of Main Street thousands. And I'll, I'll have to be careful and look back with. And Amy Dearnam, I'll definitely send you those old photos.
Well, I would hope that Sharon, you haven't seen what hurts to her, her buildings, because there's a lot of similar effects. Also, talk to the, the Larry folks. And then you're talking to the design and that's correct. Summary for me, I would say would be trying to get inset doors. Because it would define your entrances, for the general public on the roof. It would give you shelter from the animals, which certain times of the year is very important. And it would allow you to frame some of your ceiling. You know, it's like you need a soft.
Yeah.
Uh, like your kick plates are, I think, I like them a lot. I'd recommend that you restore the, the one lower corners rather than trying to match it all the way across. Which will save you money, because my guess is it's core getting real trans, I think.
I'll be happy with that. Yeah, I think it's a perfect timing.
Yeah. On the top, my comment would be to use some, on the top cornice, some differentiating colors to try to pop out some of the downwork and stuff like that, if you can afford it. Um, because it, it would really make that cornice more tough. And then if you go the tax credit route, um, they're gonna recommend and I would I would recommend getting someone to try to see what the original paint colors are. Katie is an expert, a woman with dick, on tax credits. There is paperwork, there's, there's painted suffering, they don't back a truck up and dump a, you know, two hundred fifty thousand in a truckload, but yeah. It's real money, it's worth pursuing, and it can help save your building, and it can help take it to the next level. Those are my comments.
Would be inset storefront, I think, I might have, I think you something different, or I was pushing, at least on three o'clock, I'd push the entire storefront in.
Let's talk about the doors, the doors, and what happens when you push it in, like, Chase, can we show the that picture from the fifties, the one that's part of the drawings?
Yes, I, I think I see what you're saying, so your preference is just the doors, not the entire.
Yes.
Just a minute, the other side.
Yeah.
That's kind of standard flat storefront with a door as a three feet.
If you want a perfect image, look at, um, is it, is it still pending in real estate? Look at pending real estate. Okay, first.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That has an original inset storefront. With the cast fire columns and everything like that. That, that's one of our key architectural elements for historic storefronts on this main.
We lost a few.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who else had some?
I just wanted to know, are these lights right here? Do they ever need to be attached?
I know, that's difficult. It's all brick up there, and I don't really like attaching the split brick, so it's gonna be a really complicated detail. You have something to be thought about, but, yeah. Signage needs to be tricky. I know we're not too size with the act here, but just penetrating and drilling the whole brick is not a great thing to do.
No.
I just encourage you to come back. Good job, said we, this is all advisory, but it belongs to all us, well, work on historic buildings. And have help with troubleshooting and materials recommendations, these. My hair is a resource. Really appreciate you coming in this early in the project, too.
Yeah, of course, yeah, the advice, just hear me out, but, thank you.
Talk to us before you spend the.
I know.
Either that means be changing, I think you just saved us a lot of money.
Definitely heard of John.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
Thank you for caring about the building. And thank you for moving it from where it is back in time, architecturally.
Thank you.
Yeah. Set like a little momentum for that. Thank you all.
I gave some phone numbers up to people who can help you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We have two subfields working.
I've never even heard of Pearl, but it's about to be completed.
He's like required department.
Let's talk about Pearl.
The details.
So it's an art, like.
What about the pearl? Oh, the pearl, I talked to John twice, if you want me to tell you. Did you talk to Nancy, like John, like, yeah? He would be willing to try and do something, and he's very regretful, and I said, he should be. He told you years ago, somebody might do something with this building. He said, I know, I think, when you're old, you can say that. Anyhow, he is interested in trying to do something, but, I don't know, it's pretty bad in the back, where the wall is.
Does he want to actually sell it, or he just wants to maybe do something?
Well, I think if somebody offered him the right pricing, too. Because I don't think he has the money. Well, somebody offered him, oh, it worked for me. Well, it was somebody offered him, did you tell Nancy, somebody offered him hundred, ninety thousand, I mean, an unbelievable amount, a couple years ago, like ninety thousand or a hundred and twenty, it was and he wasn't interested.
I have a buyer for it, but he will give him the time of day.
And what he got, what he offered him, two hundred thousand?
I have no idea.
Well.
He's an architect who has great plans to build him.
Well, give me his name and I'll give it to John.
I gave him Mike's phone, you told me to go to Mike, and I gave Mike's phone number.
His son Mike is supposed, my, his son Mike was supposed to do it, but, well, he was gonna, and he hasn't done it. And I didn't choose him out.
And all it hears is the family wants to do it, they're not interested in selling it, that's what we.
Well, John kind of told me that he doesn't, they, they got the money to swing it, and they don't. Don't have two quarters. Yeah. But they, they're in a time crunch.
What is the, I mean, I read the signs of tape on the door, I mean, but there's no timeline for peak forming the requirements, do you know?
Sixty days to.
Of March thirteenth.
I don't remember if it's sixty days.
At least turn on the record.
I think it was for a plan.
So it's ten days from now.
Yeah.
It sounded like, um, they had, they had to do something right away, or they were just gonna, they're counting, so they're gonna, you know.
That's not.
No, it's not.
Well, they can't demo it without doing a remodel assessment.
They are probably full of asbestos.
And so, that is not, I mean, we don't know, but if there's some examination in the building, there's asbestos.
Well, I, I hear, I think that's.
As, as we have learned.
Yeah, John did go up and talk to Katie, Welter, your Katie.
The other Katie.
At the museum, Welter, Lisa Welter.
Okay.
He, he'd go talk to her, because I told him, and he told me he was going up there.
And that's the day I talked to him, he was there. And they had already given him, uh, Barbara Darden's number, I think, as she did, talking, so trying to figure something out.
So maybe the next time she.
I give you a name and a number to pass on.
Give it to, oh, well.
I'll email it to you.
Okay, email it to me, please. Yeah, it's just a shame. I don't think they'll do it themselves. I mean, after all.
John told me that we're not allowed to do it anytime soon.
Which means you both have to do it.
Yeah, this is our job.
They, they can get up, get a, oh, no. One, Barbara Darden is a good resource, even if they, if you can modify the building in such a way that at least can stabilize it for the time being, like she would be like background to do, to know how to do that.
And that's small. I, I have a print in mind.
I think it's a long way with a big deal.
Yeah.
Here's my gut feel, if somebody does something really drastic by saying, whether to take away the building from you, we're not.
Well, maybe, I must fill on, all will be love.
My guess is the back, the back wall of the, is there a state on the back of that thing?
Uh, kind of is, that's where the screen was, and there actually, there was a little bit of something you could do in front of the.
I think that whole section.
Sure.
Yeah, the garage is attached to it.
That's what's always trouble.
It's really bad, yeah, but, yeah, I don't took a look, and I don't.
Did he give a, a price that you have would be there?
Oh, he just told me, no, we're not putting. Sorry.
Well, even if we could get like a historic structure assessment done, so we know, know what we're dealing with, you know? And there's a state ground building program, okay, but there's no, it's not, but, the real, it's, it's a pretty good turnaround. And actually, the NPA will do, I think.
But he has ten days.
I, I would say realistic if you're involving the state or any government, you have six months to start to finish. We did the gym structural assessment, and they had a building structural assessment in less than ninety days. Yeah.
So what are those?
That's where it started, so.
In sixty days.
My understanding, from talking to John and knowing the town, if they don't say, we are getting a architectural historic person to look at it and do something, they could, in sixty days, they can say, you gotta do something, I mean, they could just say.
We're subject to civil.
Yeah, and, I don't, I don't know if it tells us in county, this is.
That's right, it's a charity, that's right.
Um, but it would, it would have to go to court and be a court mandated abatement access that would take many, many months, I don't know.
And they're, then they'd have to pay a lawyer, maybe better have to sell it for twenty thousand.
Yeah, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to ratchet up the budget, you know, we've been talking about this since we started, six years, right?
Oh, yeah, six years.
Hopefully, this notification will have to be taken more seriously.
Well, it did, it did scare him a little.
To this property, and I understand that.
There does come a time when you have to decide that I'm not the right steward for this building. And the worse the building gets, the worse stewardship it needs, right? Nancy, you'll go talk to him again together, maybe the two of us. Yeah. Yeah, we should do that.
If you guys submit, like, like, his goal, I mean, I know his goal would be like, somebody rises and comes and makes a perfect room.
Yeah.
But, but like, realistically, like, does he have, does he have a goal?
Not really.
If, if he, if you can give him that out, then that's a place to start, of being like, oh, okay, now we know what he wants.
See, he grew up up there, that's where he lived. His folks started the Arrow Theater. And his mom, I've seen him, his mother's name was Pearl, Pearl Roy, and him and they had that. So it's, he's got that sentimental thought to it, but that's the way I feel about pending court, burned halfway down, and then they torched him. I grew up there, so.
Perhaps.
Things happen.
They could agree to keeping the name, or the spirit of the city, building music.
It's their color, the pearl.
And having the history made known at that location.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's. But until he's willing to articulate what he wants, then it's impossible to move forward.
I think, um, when the museum was talking to him, then they had to come up with twenty-five percent at least, or something like that, we was that script, to have it.
You don't have to have a strike assessment done to have any work done on it at all. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, say, oh, they might have that, you know, to have a matching, you know, to eighteen percent, it's probably.
That's a problem, you're worth a quarter of eight bucks.
It's just land.
No, it isn't, you don't land. The land, or.
Yeah, two hundred fifty, two fifty.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's so, the, the challenge is this, the problem, the building on the project is worth zero. Until the Groys accept that. And that's what I'm saying about his goal, like, yeah, and until he's able to articulate what he wants, there's no way to get, so you give him one.
Okay.
It's actually worth less because of the effort of work that has to go through.
Oh, yeah.
To remove and clear the lot to make it safe or something.
Oh, yeah, just like, um, that's, that's awesome. EPA, putting up stuff, oh.
So I would guess more in the hundred thousand dollar range, if, if I was the person suggesting one of my buyers to buy it.
But you minus the demolition costs and the hay.
You think it's worth three hundred fifty thousand to be for a town lot? Do you think that?
One main street, a whole process, two, right.
So if you say three fifty, but another hundred thousand or more to tear it down.
And it could be considerably more if it has asbestos.
And it probably does, asbestos.
And your, your curies cost.
Yes.
You know.
You mean, a lot in town is worth three hundred fifty million.
One man.
I'm pretty. Why did I buy someone out of twenty?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
All right, I don't think we're gonna solve them for a while.
No, we're not, no.
But.
But I'm glad you guys are working. Please, keep us, just, we'll keep working on it, yeah.
Because maybe this will be your, uh, first big job.
She got one man, I started to.
All right, let's, let's move on from Pearl and talk about all the things under his, uh, history body. Let's talk about coffee, let's talk about coffee.
It is moving today.
It's just, we, we can have many visitors, but we're not gonna keep up, and I follow up on Facebook that it was a great event. We look forward to meeting new people next week. I'm freezing in such a way that anybody that missed out this week, we're gonna be back next week. Well, turn a positive spin, and it gave us a chance to talk about other things.
Yeah.
But it was, and also the, I, I saved an extra copy here, when I passed out at the chamber, if anybody, I haven't seen it.
She came to the chamber and she spoke about this, and I loved the bright yellow, that's my favorite color.
I was looking for the paper, I opened it, it was thicker than the rest of the quality. And so I was giving, here's the teaser, a new calendar that's gonna be coming soon. All the work, chairs, things are going, but I don't have to commit to get nervous, and I have suppliers.
Yes, they might.
The clock is ticking.
They have, they had a hundred and ten people there. Yes, twenty-five of them wanted to say something, and three didn't reach them.
Wasn't reaching this slot.
It was a good start, and we're gonna continue.
It was a good start, and, well, that was the second time I spoke about HPC, that was the time I restarted the slot, and I had something to hand up. So in the back, I summarized our events for the month, and when it was gonna be, and that kind of stuff. So I was also thinking, maybe going forward, I like the idea of having a flyer to hand somebody, this is where our meetings are. This is who we are, here's the members, how did you get ahold of us, just something, you could say, oh, HPC? How did you get ahold of us? Just something, you could say, oh, HPC, it was the new director here, here, take this. Like, we only have three minutes.
Okay. All right, let's go to the next one, coloring contest.
Um, so I sent you the draft, in the back. Did everyone think it was acceptable yet?
I thought.
Because Joe's already made copies.
He asked this morning, you made copies, because I really needed to pass it out, so we tested.
So.
Didn't say.
That's okay, if, that's, that's how mine, you've just been doing that, yeah.
Can you do a second one on your webpage?
Okay.
Marketing.
You're gonna do marketing for, for the whole, whole world?
For the, for the Facebook.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I'm gonna be posting like three pictures per week.
Okay.
Be here for years.
Okay.
Because we already have the past releases, I'll be there.
And do you take them to the teachers, or do you take them to like, boys and girls, or how do you do all?
Well. Elementary school.
Okay, you're doing the whole elementary, teachers and, okay.
Well, I was trying to get them to make these copies, so we have the.
How I did it last year, so I gave it to the office, and then the office gave it to each teacher. And that's at Darren Gatters.
No, I did it.
Oh, the elementary person.
That's how I did it last year.
Okay.
Elementary, and then at Darren Gatters, I'll be going to the office and maybe give it to the person.
Well, if you can let me know when you're at the library, so I can say, you can go to the library and pick them up.
I was going to drop them on tomorrow.
Okay.
So the packet drawing is a draft. Do you have a, I mean, I mean, now it's obvious now because the copies have been made.
Well, that's, I think it looks great.
I'm happy to have it. I'm glad that you feel that way.
Oh, seriously?
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's charming.
Yeah, it's simplistic, but it's fun. Well, that's, like, to kids, it's perfect.
Yeah.
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 And tell us if you can print out a couple and give your kids a historic. Oh, I guess, yeah. Inside information, that's right.
Oh, my God, no.
No, I'll, but, uh, I probably just have my screen shot, so.
Um, I'm gonna take them to the library, yes, I will do that.
Um, last year we have a stack at Full Circle, do you care if?
No, I do not.
The more, the more of the mayor reception, yes, as far as I'm concerned.
Um, Susie, didn't last year you do Boys and Girls Club?
I did, and that's why I was saying I can do it, maybe that would be.
Same kids that are already going.
Well, they're all the same kids that are at the elementary school.
Yeah, so I would think.
Okay, then we won't worry about it.
Yeah.
Um, I'll distribute those. Actually, I did some of it tomorrow.
Okay.
These schools are, these schools, all of them, right.
Okay, thank you.
And now we're just.
Okay, you're.
Yeah. Um, and I mean, feel free, like, if you have little neighborhood kids or whatever, like, I have.
Great kids, great, great kids, exactly, exactly. Yeah, me too, Joe.
It's completely blind judging, so it's not, and we are not the ones making the decisions, as you might remember.
Yeah, so.
There you go, perfect. Um, I, I've already talked about once, two once upon a for peas, about the book tokens, like we did last year. Um, I just went ahead and put down the same gifts as we had last year, but if you guys wanna branch out, do something different, I'm more than willing.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
What do you, what do you think the kids want as gifts?
Ice cream.
I'll, I'll give the ice cream like I did last year.
Okay.
They, I think they, they love it.
With the Louis.
There are different versions now.
Well, they are.
Really?
They're doing very bad, but if it feels like they're not wanting to give that.
I'll just buy it.
Well, I was gonna say, okay.
You're gonna buy it.
Case that given, free, um, ice cream, sometimes good things for the kids.
I tried telling them last year, they were rude.
I'm talking, that was a different case.
Yeah.
And then what if it's?
I swiped really.
Yeah.
I can still buy swiped fruit.
Okay.
They seem like nice.
We can record it.
One thing about is last year was the great, this year, I thought it's a different case, right? Not, honestly, second year, we had more of a track record, you've seen that we actually accomplished something last year with sixty-one hours of reasoning. Yeah, and someone might have been having a.
Yeah.
Yes, so. Um, and then the third thing on this page is, um, coming to do the voting. The voting is the thing that I will not be here for.
Right.
I will, I will volunteer anytime you need me, okay?
We're about to. I've got a whole bag of stuff for you to talk to.
Okay. Let me up for those bad weekend squads.
We talk, we talk about Memorial Day weekend. Um, so it's the Friday and Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, and then the Tuesday after, or the three.
What happens on Tuesday?
Voting.
Oh, okay.
I didn't wanna do vote, and they're not open on Monday, because Monday is Memorial Day.
Oh.
And they aren't open on Sunday, so twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
For Tuesday, you?
Uh, no, I'll be back, I'll be back on Wednesday to take everything down, and to tally up the votes, and to inform everyone that who won. And then to do the framing, like I did last year, and to get the prizes to.
Okay, I will sign me up for probably the worst day there is Saturday.
Okay.
So I'll take Saturday as number.
Ten AM.
I don't care.
Okay.
But, you know, use me as the, um, the filling for a spot that nobody else will.
I cannot do Friday, the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
I could do Friday, the twenty-sixth.
I could do Tuesday, like, in and out, chasing children, but, okay, we'll get.
I'm not sure what to do.
I could be definitely around.
Okay.
I'm not sure what to do, but I can be available from Tuesday morning.
Okay.
Once, no duties for that afternoon.
Okay. It's really easy, Joe. You basically just say to people, would you like to vote on our coloring contest with the dot? And you hand in the nods.
Oh, yeah, you could do it.
The nods are gonna be in this bag, and Nancy's gonna have your dots.
You can stand there till.
This would be a sort of great opportunity to have our extra flyers taped out.
Yes, and I do have some talking points that are in the folder as well, so.
Cool.
Um, so, keep that in mind. I'm sorry I can't be here, but, you know.
So are the talking points in the folder, flyer?
They're more just for us to, to say, like, oh, did you, do you know, like, somebody will say, what about, you know, what about that courthouse? What do you know about that? And you'll say, oh, well, it's actually a local landmark in the National Register. So I have all the list of the local parks, I have all the list of the state register, I have all the list of the national register. I try, try to anticipate what people might ask questions about. I will tell you, last year, people asked very few questions about anything except for the art contest.
Yeah, and I think that's true. I mean, that revised version of who we are, who the members are, when our meetings are, and maybe mention of that one, because at the end of the month, that would be the one thing carried forward.
Yeah.
That's. Comments on.
Three zero three, two one four, eight zero six nine.
I will call you. I, I probably can do one of those. I might write on, I write on a calendar of the wall where my landline used to be, because if I put it on here, I'm talking on phone, then I can't find it. So, yeah.
Would you care if I did change something at the speedway to the.
They changed something, you'll be.
Yeah, and so.
I know, I, I fear what I have now will be redundant, and, you know.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be worse in forty years.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your continued support of this event. I think it's gonna be grand. You and I can talk about what's in this bag.
Do you before you go?
Most of them, yes.
Okay.
Will there be some sort of like, here's who's gonna be there once, email, and we. Once, once I've got this all filled in, then I will get with Nancy, and she will be my proxy. Yes.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm very much.
Awesome job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great job.
She wore some special shoes today, I wonder if everybody could take note of it.
Cause she's been a job.
I didn't, I didn't mean yours, that's awful.
A job has a keen interest in it.
Those are the other red ones. All right, let's keep going. Okay, calendar. Go.
Is your money next week? We're so excited. It's been a little bit of a bumpy road that we're getting.
A real bumpy road for a lot.
We're getting there, it'll happen. I already have a bunch of people already said that they're excited to buy calendars.
Also, why they might have their, their calendar, and they did a colored one this year, which is more expensive. We did black and white, because it's a lot more expensive for color.
They're not really terrific.
Yeah, they are good.
So if, if this is a success, and we sell out, and if we can get another turnaround in a couple weeks, depending on how busy.
Talk about it, optimist. I'm hoping we sell two hundred and fifty, and she's.
I think we're just.
Fifteen dollars.
We're selling fifteen, and I'm thinking we're gonna sell out, and we'll do another run, and we got a sponsor for the first run, and we have partial sponsorship for the second run, and we're ready to go.
Really? Oh, well, you're on the money. I wonder if we should offer a discount if you bought five or more. Oh, dollars saved or something.
Well, in order to get a discount, when I was buying Lars Lieber calendars, I had to buy ten more to get a discount. Which I brought out ten, and it was gifts to clients and coworkers.
Oh, I was just thinking, I, I mean, I hope they sell as, as well as you think they will.
If they sell slow, we could resort to bulk, where if somebody asks, we can have like conversation, but it's ongoing for charity, and like when I was buying from Lars Lieber, that's for profit. So it's different, so he can make.
All profit because.
True.
Pay for the.
Print.
Pay for the team.
Yay.
Well, this is awesome. I, I think, you know, we've come so far on this, on history, my thing. I mean, you know, we talked about, we did strategic planning years ago, all the stuff we're gonna do, and we talked about, let's just do one thing, and that, I mean, this is pretty impressive.
What's historical marks, so historical preservation mark. They come out with a game.
Thanks, Mary Theresa. Mary Theresa was last year.
No, I, la- last year, Mary Theresa, there's, it's unquestionably a wild success.
Thank you.
I'm referring to her, and it is the second annual.
Exactly.
Facebook?
Yeah.
Second annual.
Okay, everybody ready to talk about the next agenda item? Okay, let's talk about the airport history document review. Any comments? This is something Dan, uh, heading up. We got a lot of more upset.
He had a passive voice, that was the fact. Yes, he did a lot of it. This is passive, yeah. He had most of the folks running. He did none.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, we shouldn't have to do our calendar, because I'm sure a lot of them.
Okay, Mary Theresa, since you seemed to have, you got into this.
Well, I poured water all over my glasses, so now I can wear my sunglasses, so it really, it's, it's. We are proud of our history, I'm reading it as I think it should be, but, okay. We are proud of our history as a community-inspired transportation, we're committed to sustainable development for town and county residents, period. The airport currently occupies approximately one hundred and eighty-four acres near the intersection of US I was two eighty-four and two eighty-five. Local aviation near this site can be traced as far back as the nineteen twenty. Earliest operations, and I suggested maybe a decade to go in there, but earliest operations in Buna Vista uh, occurred on four intersecting dirt roadways approximately three feet, three thousand feet each in the vicinity of the present-day rodeo grounds. Longtime locals recall residents being summoned to illuminate, illuminate the airfield with vehicle headlights for late arriving aircraft.
My thought.
By the nineteen sixties, private aircraft, aircraft operators used a dirt runway near the present site of the airport, period. In the late nineteen seventies, a group of nearby land and business owners revived the vision for an airport to attract businesses, integrate higher education, develop the local workforce, and provide transportation to connect the upper Arkansas Valley with both the rest of the state and the nation, period. New paragraph. This coalition partnered with the town of Buna Vista and the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, to develop the, I, and I, I'm not sure about the use, the word, word use of develop, I thought maybe promote, I don't know. Um, the idea within the community. These efforts resulted in grading and paving of the first runway for the Buna Vista Municipal Airport, which would become the CCRA, and I'm earlier in July to do it, the CCRRA as the abbreviation for the Central Colorado Regional Airport. Um, airport ownership and operation transferred from the firm that constructed the airport to the town of Buna Vista in two thousand and five, thanks to productive partnerships with the FAA and the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT. The airport offers excellent facilities, coal, completely resurfaced runways, full and self-service feeling for Jet A and one hundred LL, I'm sure aviation people know what that is. Heated executive hangar and attached terminal facilities, facilities with high altitude vertical lifting, automated weather observation system. The airport, in collaboration with Chappie County, CDOT's Division of Aeronautics and the FAA, and other state and federal organizations, as well as the users of the airport and the community at large, updated its master plan in twenty sixteen to address projected aeronautical demand from twenty thirty-five. These planning efforts ensure that the airport is poised to meet the growing needs of the region, beginning with new development opportunities available now, exclamation.
I didn't put that in there. I didn't write that.
No.
Yes.
So I gave him a lot of the permission. One thing that I told him later that you can put in, they, they got molds, construction, and, um, that just died once. Ron Sutter put up the six thousand dollars to pay them, which is now the taxiway, but it was the first runway, six thousand dollars.
Yeah, so basically, I just took it out of, out of, out of passive voice and, like.
Good job, go rewrite it, retype it for him.
Okay.
Cause if you're sending them corrections, he won't get it.
Okay.
Just retype it.
I'll just accept it.
Yeah, accept the changes and say no to them.
Okay, there you go. Is he gonna be cranky? I mean, he's maybe.
No.
No.
He'll be appreciative.
No, he'll be glad.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We're gonna put the leaf.
That's right.
Screw that leaf.
All right, say, I have a book slide today.
Leave me alone.
Mary Theresa, thank you.
That was kind of something I signed, so I'm gonna be perfectly honest. Well, I wish, I knew you did that, because we did this calendar.
Calendar.
You did a calendar. And I did all the descriptions, and I sent it, took it to the museum to have the girl who works there, Ray, who is young and does, put it on a PDF. And then when we started looking at it, either I made a mistake, and then she made another mistake, so we found all these little papers. Yeah, it's awful. It was awful. I'm not moving another calendar. I'll get the pictures and tell you. Mary Theresa ran it out.
Okay, we have, any other comments on this? Okay. Uh, before we go to updates from related organizations, I'm gonna circle back on the ADG comments. For chapter nineteen, we owe, look, Mike, uh, within ten days, our comments in writing.
Oh.
Sure.
Or Matt, you were using one of them.
Like a letter.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, so I was going to put together something, send it to everybody, get your comments, and then we'll forward it to you. And that will begin compliance. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Maybe, maybe send it, send it to me next week. Yes. Send it to Chase, and Chase will get it to Mike. Yeah. That's a good chase.
Yes, sir. And I think it'd be nice to have, like, something that says, they, they're doing a great job, but also, like, as the project goes along, if you want to continue to talk to us, yeah, feel free to come back, bring other family members, because there seemed to be a little bit of arguing there, and, yeah.
I think that'd be awesome. All right, I'll try to do that. I'll send it to everybody, you can comment, and then we'll pound it out, but we have the, for the code, we have ten days, so. I'll get it out tomorrow. Okay, updates from related organizations.
Well, museums chugging along, it's gonna be gorgeous. That upstairs, that courtroom, they refinished the floors, oh my gosh, it's beautiful. There are signs, do not walk on this with tap shoes. But it really is.
You got a lot of kids trying to do that.
Well, they did have some kids doing tap lifts. They said, no more tap lifts.
Well, they're doing ballet, and they're doing the tap, but they have to put down masks while they do it.
Yeah, they can't do it on the floor, yeah.
So sad.
Yeah. And, um, we've got, all the displays have been updated, I mean, they worked this summer, I mean, this winter, because it was cold in there, and it's, they're just gorgeous. They've been redone. We did the back room, they used to have some clothing at Far Back. Northwest room is a woman, this is Women's History Month, and we did all kinds of women's things, so. and we did all kinds of women's things, so go take a look at it in choice and, and kids' toys that were women's kids played with. So that looks really good. The first room on the left is being refinished, it's getting, we've got one, two, we've got six new windows going in. So right now, that room is, the floor is, it's all torn up, they're gonna redo it, paint it and redo it. And so we're gonna have, they are looking great slowly. And what else do I, we did the, um, the rock view. Oh, yeah, we have a new rock display in an old office. So now the museum office is upstairs, it's in the research room now, but as soon as they finish the old principal's office upstairs, then it will go there. See, I use all these old terms. Were you there when it was the principal's office? Oh, he's older than I thought. And, and then the kayaks are always displayed in the hall. And that's what happened. For fifty years when I was around going in and out of the building, even when I was in school, seventy years ago, you went out of the back door of the courthouse into the gym and then outside when there was a fire. Well, it doesn't work good.
I was just there firing.
Well, we went there, we went that way a lot.
Fire.
So anytime you had a fire, drill, right? And that, and they, I told you this story. This is the fun story. My husband was in high school there. He was a year older than me. And one year, the superintendent said to Bryce, we're gonna have a fire drill, but I don't want anybody to know. So he went to all his friends and bet them five dollars or whatever, that he had enough nerve to, they just pulled an alarm in the front house. And he collected like fifty, sixty dollars. Because they didn't believe that he could have enough nerve.
Surprising, yeah.
Yeah, it was awful.
Was that the thing that did it for you?
Enough to ring that bell. And John Roy said that when he was in my school, that they actually started the fire underneath the stairs today and that's how come they had to redo the stairs.
After I was gone.
Maybe not him per se, but like, no, it was class. It was the superintendent's secretary, you remember her? What was her name? McMullen kid.
Oh, his dog and his brother?
No, it wasn't his brother, it was McMullen kid and anyhow, they started a fire under the staircase in the building.
In the little closet.
Yeah. It's storage. You can still see the burned places on the floor. We're just lucky. So anyhow, we have to get another fire escape. First, we've got to get a furnace that will be vented outside so it doesn't go up in the gym. And we are working on that. I think we've already raised some money. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people and they go, I know Susie wants money. But I've collected about seven thousand so far. Anyhow, then after we fix the furnace, we're gonna have to get another fire escape out through us. Some point we haven't figured out. The state has to help us decide because it's a historic building, you can't just put it wherever.
So what's your?
You're a amazing person.
No, I talk a lot.
Susie, what's going on with the fire department on that too?
Okay, the fire department came and looked at it about three months ago, that woman that's the head lady, and she said, you have got to fix this. Which she had a number of things, she probably had eight or ten things, nothing major, but a fire escape. And Lisa, who works there, got everything corrected and done and she came back and checked it about two weeks ago and said, it's great, you've done well. And she's given us some time to figure out the fire escape. Thank goodness, because we couldn't have been open this summer.
How much time is she giving?
Well, I think if we can figure it out by fall, we, if we can just figure out what we're gonna do and then start raising the money. I mean, we don't have to have it built right away. Thank heavens. Yeah, how about one of those ropes you hang off the side?
It's for a big slide, yeah.
A slide, that, the kids would use it all the time, wouldn't they?
It's making it inflatable, so you don't have to have it all the time, but it's like, if the fire alarm goes off.
Well, we're planning, we'll mention that to Barb Garten.
Yeah, sure. It's reversible.
Yeah. Okay, that's in, I think, that's in the museum. The Turner Farm, oh, the Turner Farm and the depot, both passed all the fire inspections. Perfect. Not one problem. They had their fire extinguisher set up. So that was why I didn't do that, I meant the fire. They did. Okay. Next. Nobody else has anything to say? I've got you guys.
We've got a hundred percent construction documents on the gym.
Go ahead. And did you get some of the grants you applied for?
We are still waiting on EPA.
Are you?
We are getting positive signals. I was just told today that the war decisions have been made and approved and now it's just a matter of waiting on elected schedule to make the announcement. I was like, whoa, it could take two more weeks, but everybody shares in the pain, so.
Right, Katie, I'm telling you.
Sounds positive. Yeah, so we're still targeting a summer, we're about to have an onsite bid conference for all the abatement contractors next Friday. See a bunch of people there, that's, they all dream of breaking out what it's gonna cost to clean up the building. And, and we're still trying to get that done this summer. I will say, there are certain things that could get in the way, like the federal government being insolvent.
Not really.
Yeah, like if they don't reach a resolution by June first to increase the debt ceiling, everybody will stop working and the, yeah.
I wish they put saying, increase the debt ceiling, just meet the debt ceiling. I mean, yeah, they're not gonna increase it, they're just gonna pay what they owe. We owe.
That's just the world we're in, so we, we, you know, prepare the expectations of the school district. We do, well, the good news is even if we run into the school year, we will not impact the drop-off route, which I think is a pretty apparent symptom and we'll be pleased with. That was my biggest concern. I don't wanna be the target of everyone's anger about the drop-off road blocked. So, yeah, we're gonna get started this summer and hopefully there will be a gym deployed by, next year.
Yeah. I did talk to Paul Maltz about doing a, he told me who to talk to out there because when you do the gym, we have to do something with the basement. So I've talked to, I haven't gotten.
Oh, you add a stairwell access to that basement. Well, we'll definitely, you know, we'll, we'll, let's have our final question run here in the next couple of weeks and then one revisit. But I will say, we, with the architects and the states urging, we've been able to, we can have an open connector between the buildings. But before, it was gonna be blocked off with an ADA bathroom, but we're gonna keep that opening. We're gonna keep the original bathroom entrances. And, and so it will be, it'll look very similar to what it looks like.
So you'll still have that little platform area where the door is.
Well, we have to take the stairs and rip the floor out to reinforce, to reinforce that area and, but.
But that concrete sketch, it must be strong because I ran up and down on my lock and there's wood.
There was.
Oh, there only wood?
It's all framed, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, but there, that'll be storage. So what we're thinking for the, what is now like that kind of strange console area.
It's already.
Age with walls in it and stuff. So it's a way of like signaling what it once was.
You'll be able to look through it and see the door.
There will be a door just on the wall. I don't know.
It'll be, nobody won't, nobody won't know that the door doesn't go anywhere.
There will be steps to it and it'll be a fireproof door. But I think it's, it was a good suggestion by the state and ultimately, the whole building should feel like nineteen thirty-six. That's, that's the idea and I know Rick will be getting in touch with you, Susie, about doing a permanent.
Energy.
Yeah. I think that's some. Shy and photos of Susie and Bryce in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Forever in love. Oh, that place was fun. It was fun.
Susie sent us a picture of Bryce and he had a top hat.
Oh.
The event.
Yeah, and a suit and, didn't he have a bow tie? Had a tie.
Yeah.
And I had a long, we did the.
Well, why was it more like a garden in the gym?
It was my favorite lady. We were doing the different. I learned to do the two-step and the walk. And they, they redid it for each era of my favorite lady. Well, great photos, they're about this big and dark.
Unseen holograph.
You guys did that, younger people did that, unseen holograph. Do you have any pictures? That would be great if you do.
Yeah.
If you know anybody that pictures inside that gym, let us know.
You're gonna put the seats back in on the sides? Now with the white and the red line, the output was the conference.
Right there at the concrete.
Yeah, those seats are long. You know, it's interesting, they drilled the holes in the floor. We drilled the holes in the floor and the seats, when they get on them, they put them under the floor.
Really?
Yeah.
You're kidding? All those bleachers that were there?
Yeah, not all of them.
But a lot of them, under the floor.
Yeah.
Oh, but it's lost the structural support for the building as a stand.
They're foundations. No, they're in little pieces, so.
That weird?
Yeah.
That happened, maybe you remember that. When they threw the bleachers out, I know. I know that, but I don't, you remember when they tore the bleachers out? That was back when we were all gone.
So what else we got?
If anyone else needs entry forms, I brought two hundred. Ian's taking a hundred. Anybody else want?
Give me about ten, I know some kids that I.
Do you want some for the library?
Sure.
So I give Susie ten.
Kate needed some, but.
Yeah, leave whatever stuff to Mel in your school and then if they sell and you want enough. Thank you, and you're heard for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
And yeah, I got them left over. I, I paid for the paper in my box, let me help you.
But you also pay for the ink, I had to get a new thing of ink. Remember if you want a doll, you have to get an ink.
They're fifteen.
Sure. So give me forty.
Sure.
Have the kids that want a doll picture, your son's too big and.
Yeah, your daughter's too big.
Okay.
Okay, what else? It's their contacts? Well, you've all poured time, Chase, you're, you're it.
Yep.
You've been promoted?
I'm in, yes.
Is that kind of like, you're the sole survivor, so now you're.
There we go, yeah.
So you got stuck.
So, those we? Yeah, I don't accept the position as someone for so.
Why are you signing for so electric? That's our turn.
So who's going to see? Really? Yeah.
Are you? I know we lost.
No, that's.
Oh, Doug.
Yeah.
Oh, Doug.
Yeah, because he's a chartered inspector.
Oh. Yes, because we lost our grown guy, we lost, there were four people, we lost our CEO. And please, vote for the incumbents. I'm sorry, but Joe Wodgeski's been there seven years and he is so good. At least vote for him.
Well, I know the group is going for these talks, I'm prepared for that.
I know, but I've written letters and I'm doing an ad, I'm paying for an ad and paper because Joe is Vice President of Colorado Real Electric. Vice President, he'll be president next year and once he doesn't, then he's gone. And he's learned, does so much for it. Anyhow.
Well, Joseph? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Been short, but I can do it.
Short, but kind of long in some way.
And you're not, you're not going too far.
I don't know.
You.
What's he gonna, what are you gonna do? Or you wanna wait and tell us and be surprised?
No, these special projects need to come Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, then you'll get to help people that are putting in a huge soda fountain or something.
Uh, yeah, that might not be the quite the project. You'll still be in, what's it, Corbin, Corbin Dale?
The car, carbon, it's from the.
Carbon, yes. I was working on that and probably more water, yeah, stuff like that.
Now, is carbon a street with the railroad cars or which, what is that?
No, carbon is street in the town on Land, over near the collegiate commerce departments. They were building workforce housing there in the center.
Oh, good. You're hoping you build the childcare, we need that.
We're gonna build a building and hopefully.
Just have a classroom. Is that people working on the summer school, just looking at?
I'm sorry, it's like, you know, the potential locally that we know right now.
The one that's in Old Catholic Church?
Yeah.
Good, because I hate that conce, I'm sorry, it looks like the Old Catholic Church with that. It's a great little place, I've been in to see the kids, it's really good, but. Okay. Always something happening in this town. It makes your head spin when you've been here seventy-five years, let me tell you.
Well, Chase, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here. At the next meeting, you can tell us what you'd like us to do. Give us some direction. Now, it'll. Think about how we can help you come up to speed. It's like, you know, there's gonna be, you know, we've all taken a lot of classes, done a lot of training, gone to, you know, annual events, things of this nature. So I don't think you're gonna have the time in the next six months, it sounds like, but at some point, you know, they have, you know, we had Saving Places Conference, which I think you'd find interesting. That there's several other people, several, they call there?
Hundreds, yeah.
From all over the state, a lot of people like yourself. It should be held in Denver. There's a lot of training classes and background. They also have opportunities around the state, I think, what's it, this summer is the hunt. Yeah.
Well, hunting this summer isn't a lot of fun.
I was just gonna say, August can. Yeah.
I'd like to have it.
We talked about maybe having our area via, a remote conference locations.
Sometime. Now, we're not fighting with the state, we might turn the corner and be able to say, would you like to come out again? But, yeah, I think we're great locations.
Especially if you have a school in San Antonio.
Yeah.
I mean, my goodness, because that's perfectly exemplifies reservation with you.
But if there's anything we can do, Chase, to help you come up to speed, we're really happy to help.
Yeah, I think the one, planning department gets back on speed, I'll give it a round of applause.
Okay. Early twenty-five.
Should be a high, big numbers for the company. Are we getting members?